Good afternoon. Welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Worcester School Committee meeting and summer schedule. And I also want to welcome my new superintendent. Madam Superintendent, good to see you. And we are going to start with a, I don't know, before the roll call will stand for the pledge allegiance and the national anthem.
I pledge allegiance to our United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Okay, I think.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Here.
Member McCullough?
Here.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Here.
And Mayor Petty?
Here. Okay, we have approved the minutes of June 16th and June 27th. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Yes.
I think it says part of the consent agenda, possibly?
Oh, it did, we should do that together, correct.
Thank you.
I misread that. But we've got to get gone through that. But I do want to point out too, now, one, before we take the vote, that I want to thank District Attorney Joe Early for donating $5,000 to North High School on purchase of fitness equipment. He's been very active in donating money into the community, so much appreciated. So if they're on the consent decree, collectively, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay, we have some held items. We are going to G. Is 2.170, consider approved the job description of a building substitute. We all set? Member Novick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The items were held pending the beginning of Dr. Moneraz's superintendency, and we wanted to effectively ensure that she had been consulted in the addition of the positions and the position descriptions. So I have no issue with even taking them collectively if necessary, but I'd be interested in the administration's comments regarding the positions, please.
Dr. Moneraz?
Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, so these three positions, I feel very comfortable moving forward with them. I've had some conversation with staff, and the building substitute is similar to what was done this last school year in a response to not having enough people on campus to fill substitute positions. We will enter into some conversation with our union partners around this particular job description, but feel very comfortable with this. It's something that our principals are looking forward to as well, and it gives some consistency and continuity at our schools for our youth. So very good with that one. The other two are to support our IT department, and I'm flipping through my paperwork. I've got to figure out how to do all this. It's a little bit different than what I'm used to, but the, oh, I found it. So the Assistant Information Technology Director, you can imagine, as we are working to have our one-to-one initiative be very consistent and supportive to our students, we need people who can support with the infrastructure kind of behind the scenes, behind the, what I like to say, behind the wall, and in the cloud. And so this Assistant Information Technology Director is essential to helping accelerate our programs as we move forward, to really bring our schools and our staff and our buildings up to the 21st century technology trends. So good with that. And then finally, the new SIS system, so this one is really going to be instrumental as, I'm sorry, the new Systems Data Specialist, as we move into a new student information system. This position is going to be instrumental. We want to make sure that the data we put in is clean and monitored, so that when we pull reports, those reports are good coming out, right? So good data going in, good data coming out. So very much in support of these three job descriptions, and appreciate the committee pulling them, so we could look at them prior to approval.
Okay, so we're going to take all those three items collectively. That is item 2-170, 173, and 174. Also includes the Assistant Information Technology and the job description for System Data Specialists. Member Mailman?
Quickly, this building substitutes, I think I asked this during budget to the chair, to the superintendent through the chair. Does this allow us the flexibility of day-to-day subs at all, or are they completely gone? Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
So this is where I say through the chair, right?
Yeah.
Got it. So through the chair. We are actually, honestly, just this week started talking about that, and I learned a little bit more about it. So I'm taking it back to our cabinet to discuss on a broader, on a broader scope. We believe that we could probably do both, but I don't want to commit to anything until I speak with cabinet, so, but we are looking into that.
I think full flexibility on people is really helpful.
Especially now, absolutely.
Okay, collectively on a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. We are on public comment. A member of the public may address the committee regarding any item before it for two minutes. Those speaking can state their name, their residence, and the item number that they want to speak on. Mr. Anderson, are you here to speak on anything? I just come here to listen. Okay.
That's name, city, and residence, is that right?
Yes.
Just want to make sure I'm doing it right. Chee Anderson, Worcester, speaking to 2-198, just on behalf of a donation made by UMass Chan Medical School to the North Quadrant with, system within public schools. Over the last multitude of years annually, the medical school makes a donation in collaboration with the principals and educators in the North Quadrant. There are about 12 schools in that area, and so every year we put out a call to see if there are sort of funding mechanisms that the teachers may not have available to them that we can help assist in. Sometimes it's supplies, sometimes it's an activity, sometimes a field trip, and so we just try to sort of fill that need within that quadrant. And so I just have that on the list this year, one, saying that we'd like to make the donation, but two, saying that if there are other opportunities or ways for us to be of assistance to the entire committee or the new superintendent, that we'd love to. That's, I think, really about it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Moneraz, Mr. Anderson is the Government Relations Assistant at the medical school.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Anybody online? Seeing nobody? Okay, we are going down to now the Standing Committee reports. The first one, Teaching, Learning, and Student Support, met on Wednesday, June 22nd. Mr. McCullough, Member McCullough?
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to keep doing this, but I think that we skipped the report of the superintendent.
Oh, I did miss that, yeah. I think we need bigger print. So we need Entry Plan Update. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or, how do I refer to you? Mayor, Mayor Petty? Okay. And do I have to say through the chair to start? Sorry, sorry, community, I'm going to learn this.
No, you're good.
Okay, all right. So as promised, an entry plan was developed, and it is currently on our website, and a video went out with that. I do want to do a huge thank you to our Educational Technology Department, specifically Hayden and James, they really helped out with that video when I was here in June. And so the entry plan is about outlining a core value of mine, and really having a concrete example of how important it is to communicate with people. Because if we don't communicate, you know, I had a mentor, and he often would say, communication is like oxygen, and without it, people hallucinate. And so we want to be sure that people are not hallucinating, and instead, that they can anticipate that, as the new superintendent, my role first and foremost is to engage with the community and to listen. I also want to thank the district staff for translating our, this entry plan into all of our languages. I think there were 14 in total, and getting that on the website. So, community, please take a look at that when you get a chance. It's only three pages. So this, again, the entry plan, it's really a concrete example of my commitment to the staff, the community, and most importantly, the students that I'm here to serve. In the entry plan, I outline how I am about fostering relationships, being visible. I share my educational philosophy and my core beliefs. And as you know, I did attend Committee, the superintendent's conference last week, and in that, they talked about the importance of an entry plan for communication, and I'm participating in NISIP. And so I was really happy to be ahead of the game in having this communication plan out for everybody to see. I'm currently, the plan is written in chapters, and I'm referring to it as crafting the future story of Worcester. Worcester has had a fabulous history, and we're going to take those, what we've learned from the history and the great things, and build on them, and craft our next chapter of our story. So I'm in Chapter 1 right now, and Chapter 1 is the immersion into the community of Worcester. Believe it or not, since I started on July 1st, I've already met with 32 people, whether that be groups of people or individuals, it's already been 32, and my assistant, Joanne, has done a fabulous job in coordinating all that with me. In what I've learned so far, there's three big themes that are starting to emerge. First of all, there's a lot of excitement and positivity in the community, and just real positive energy. There is a deep desire to continue with open communication and dialogue. And then finally, I've heard in different ways, this, the importance of having inclusionary practices in our schools, and how we work with each other in terms of the adults, right? So I will be working with the team, I'll be listening to, to see if these initial trends continue to emerge, but with 32 people or groups of people sharing that, I think they'll probably continue, and then there'll be more. Chapter 2 won't start until after school starts, because it's really important to me that people take their summer to relax and to rejuvenate, so that they come back 100% ready to serve our youth. So right now, it's the people in the community that I'm really engaging with, our community partners. When school starts, then I will have coordinated forums where I can meet with our classroom educators, our counselors, of course, our principals, our parents, our formal parent groups, and then of course, our parents that are not part of formal groups, and they're just as important to the work. So that'll be Chapter 2, and when I do Chapter 2, it'll be much more structured in terms of the questions that I'll be asking. So I'll be bringing those questions forward to you at a later date. And then I'll just close by saying, you know, the motto in Worcester Public Schools is that we're from here anywhere, and I've added on to that. And so now we are about from here anywhere together, and the team is already pulling together a great institute, is that the way I should refer to it? Yes, an institute for all of our leaders, our managers. I want to invite the committee to attend on August 22nd at the Digital Credit Union, or as I've been told, DCU, which you all would know what that is, and now I do too. And this day will be about team development, and really setting this stage about how important it is to work as a team, to work and develop effective teams. And so again, we invite you to come and be a part of that whenever you can. From 8 to 9, it'll be coffee and mingling. From 9 to 3 will be the, our time together, and I want to thank the team for getting that going. We're very excited about it. I firmly believe and I know that Worcester Public Schools, we will be a model of educational excellence as we develop a culture of belonging and continuous improvement. And so I look forward to sharing more in the future, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions? Member Clancy?
Thank you. I just actually just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Moneraz for this update, and it's clear that you've listened to what we had to say, what the district needs, what the community needs, and that you've developed this, you know, your entry plan, which I just wanted to thank you for that, presenting that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, and also I appreciated that it had rolled out July 1. I loved sort of opening up the website and social media and seeing that it was already out. Could you talk just a bit through the chair to the superintendent? Where, the challenge, of course, of any new superintendent is coming in in July is always that balance of, we've got to get ready to open school, but also that you're entering at the same time. And, I mean, you're talking about it here in terms of the identify and execute activities, it'll bring about a successful 2002, 22, 23 school year, but at the same time, you're doing the entry. I'd be interested in that, and I also, in terms of, I know you're already well in contact with MASs, how you envision this working in terms of the timeline that we need to be held to in terms of goal setting and then evaluation?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So, Member Novick, I don't know if I caught your first part of the question. Do you mind just repeating that part?
Sure, just that we're, the challenge of any new superintendent is that you have to do two things at the same time. So you're entering the district, but then also the usual of, oh, it's July and August, and we have things we need to get ready for starting school at the end of August, is happening at the same time. So can you talk about balance and focus and all of those sorts of things?
Got it, thank you. I appreciate that. So let me, let me address that, and then I'll talk about the work with the goal setting and what that's going to look like, which, no, I won't go into that yet. So in, in speaking with the team, we are very much, let me back up. So I'm going to have the kickoff with the entire management on the 22nd in August. Prior to that, we've got the district staff coming back and coming together, and we're going to do that early August. And then Cabinet will have about a day and a half where we will have a retreat, really trying to get an idea, I'm calling it a retreat, but we're just going to, we're going to retreat upstairs, trying to get an idea of our current status, and making sure that we have everything in place for the start of the school year, right? So we have to be sure that we are, that our protocols are in place around COVID and what may or may not happen as it relates to that, that our transportation is ready to go, and so we'll hear a little bit more about that this evening, that we are ready with things like our school liaison officers, and so you'll hear a little bit about that, more about that in August. So we are, I am addressing these immediate needs as they are being shared with me, as I'm coming across them, when I'm reading documents, and the team has just been phenomenal in letting me know what needs to happen to be ready. So we're taking care of that while simultaneously, I'm meeting with people, I'm learning, and much of that conversation, information is also coming out, and so I'm just taking note of that, and only if it's something that has to be acted on, are we acting upon it. Otherwise, it becomes a piece of data that then we'll use as we move forward. Finally, this is where there's this, in reference to your second question about, okay, so how does this all go with the goal setting and the superintendent evaluation and all of that? And so actually, I have a coach that is offered to me, and I want to thank the committee, because that was included in my contract, and so I'm fortunate, I think I probably have the best coach in the state. I have Mary Burke, she's the retired superintendent in Chelsea, and so I had an opportunity, well, I sat with her at the conference, and I spent some time with her there, met with her yesterday, and we're going to be meeting on a weekly basis, and I did ask her specifically yesterday, next week, I want to better understand how this evaluation system works. What I'm going to, then I'll bring some recommendations to the committee, I think that's the way it works, but I'm going to make sure that I'm clear on that. And part of the work this year is, it really is a fact-finding year for much of the school year, but the goal will be that with this entry plan, by around the holidays, I should be able to, with the team, have some pretty clear trends that I can bring forward to the committee, to say, this is what it's looking like in terms of what the entry plan has, you know, shown, what's emerged, and then we can have this reciprocal dialogue back and forth to make sure we're not missing anything that you're hearing from the community. And once we finalize that, then that really tees us up to then work with the Standing Committee of Governance to refine our strategic plan, which in my mind should meld and complement my goals. So I, there's some parallel play that will be going on for about a year or so, but we'll get it on track. So a lot of back and forth, immediate needs, short-term needs, moving towards the long term. And so I've used a little bit of that language with the team about, here's immediate, we've got to do this. Where's the low-hanging fruit, what can we get working on real quick, and then what do we need to work on later? I hope that answers your question.
Okay, so the motion is to accept it in the file? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Now we have the Teaching, Learning, and Student Support.
Thank you. The Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Student Support met virtually at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, June 22nd, 2022, and in attendance were myself, Member Kamara, and Vice Chair Mailman. The first item that we took up was GB 1-53, to request that the administration collaborate with community agencies, retired teachers, and other groups to study the feasibility of establishing a summer learning program to assist K through 8 students. Dr. O'Neil gave us a bit of information on the background of the summer programs that were occurring this summer. Superintendent Panetta stated that the summer school programs were slightly different than in years past, and there were more tutoring hubs, technology-type opportunities that students had a, had the potential to be a part of, robotics camps, art museum, and that the bookmobile was also available for students. Member Kamara asked for a report on the number of low-income students who have registered to these programs compared to last year, and also a list of the programs that were offered from past years, and Ms. Kelly stated that she would provide that information. Member Mailman asked for a list of the secondary school programs being offered this year, and Dr. Sippel stated he would provide that information as well. I requested that the item be held for an update in September, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, the item was held. Our next item is GB 1-312, request that the administration explore utilizing virtual tutoring service, tutoring services for the students of the Worcester Public Schools. We've had ongoing updates this year regarding the virtual tutoring opportunities that have been provided to our elementary school students in the form of pilot programs throughout the district, and we are still exploring the possibility of what our options are at the secondary level. Member Kamara requested a report in November containing feedback from students and families on the successes and challenges of the summer and fall ignite and catapult tutoring programs. On a roll call of 3 to 0, the item was held. GB 2-141, to consider the approval of Fundamentals of Cybersecurity course. Mr. Waymoth, the new principal at Worcester Tech, gave us some information regarding the program, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, the item was approved. Item GB 2-94, request that the administration provide an update on the Worcester Public Schools' opt-in and opt-out options regarding the sex ed education curriculum, and provide the full scope of program per grade level and information regarding the hiring of staff. Mr. Burson gave us some updated information and stated that caregivers can opt their students out of the three-hour lessons at any time, and that 15.4% of students had opted out at that time. One of the things that was shared during the meeting, that the feedback from educators, and one of the main challenges, had been the misinformation regarding the curriculum, and that many educators provided in their feedback that they felt that the lessons were extremely age-appropriate, gave very important information and education to students, and were definitely what the district was sharing with the public as what was being provided versus some information that was being shared that was misinformation out in the community. I asked that if new teachers are trained on the curriculum, and we are told that there were five additional health teachers added in secondary schools, and two were hired for grades K through 3, and that they were all receiving training. Member Kamara requested a report on the number of students that opted out per school to include feedback from students and families, and Mr. Burson stated that he would provide the information. On a roll call of 3 to 0, the item was held. The final item that we took up was GB 2-145, request that the administration provide a report from January to present regarding teacher shortages to include teacher absences by school and indicate resources utilized to cover their classroom. We were given the number of absences and discussed the correlation between spikes in COVID and the availability of long-term substitutes, being able to provide greater flexibility. Member Kamara requested that a report be provided throughout the school year listing teacher absences by school, and it was suggested that the report include the number of teachers at the schools, and also the number of students that have been vaccinated. Member Mailman requested an update in September on the vaccination rate per school, and I requested the item be held for updates in September and January. On a roll call of 3 to 0, the item was held, and on a roll call of 3 to 0, the meeting was adjourned at 5:52.
Any questions? Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is actually directed at my colleague, Member McCullough. You and I had a conversation around the question of sort of of evaluation of the sex ed program and implementation, and so my question to you is, I know that that didn't happen this year. I don't want to go too far outside the scope of the item as it was filed, and that actually isn't part of it, but do you anticipate that being part of your discussion moving forward? Through the chair.
Member McCullough?
Thank you, through the chair. Thank you for that question. Yes, that was part of the discussion as well, so that is why the item is being held, so that we can have those further conversations and evaluations with the new administration coming in, and I know there's also, I believe, a change in the position of who the health liaison, the business education and health liaison is, and just getting some more evaluation done on the health curriculum, and also per Member Kamara's recommendation, really making sure we're getting some evaluative feedback from the parents and families, as well as from the educators and the curriculum overall. So thank you for that question.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, motions, motions to approve, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next time, the Standing Committee, Finance and Operations, met on Monday, July 11th. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the indulgence of my colleagues, I would recommend that we take this with items GB 2-204 and GB 2-205, which are the two items regarding transportation that were filed by Vice Chair Johnson. I know that we have both Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Freeman here in order to add to the ongoing information that we're receiving. So the Standing Committee on Finance and Operations met at 5:06 on Monday, July 11th. Present were myself, Vice Chair Kamara, Member Mailman, Mr. Allen, Mr. Freeman, Mr. Hennessy, Dr. Moneraz, Moneraz dropped through. We also had Jay Cullen, T. Mansfield, actually need to update this, Madam Clerk, S. Weston, and J. Mansfield. I can send that to you as well. So we took the three items regarding the transportation update, which is not only the standing update, but also the item filed by Vice Chair Johnson on the pre-and post-COVID report, and we also additionally took the item from Member Mailman regarding the after-school and out-of-school providers. Without going into the level of detail that we received both as backup at the Standing Committee, as well as the actual update that was given at the meeting, what I did want to make sure that people were clear on is that we are now back up to the same number of drivers that we had between Durham and ourselves in the spring. So that, plus the, what we know So that, plus the, the, what we know to be a revolution in terms of communication to our families and to our schools and to the, simply the amount of information that the Transportation Department itself has, already puts us in much better stead than we were when we closed school in June. There, there will be further conversation regarding the planning that's going forward on that and the district being responsive to the provisions around availability of drivers and so forth. There is also ongoing, and, and by that I mean really almost on a day-by-day basis, updates regarding the number of buses that are available. So as my colleagues would have seen in the backup on the July 11th meeting, the number of buses that we already had in terms of those that were being rented. As my colleagues are aware, we're filling in for summer school, and as the new buses come in with rented buses, I had received a little bit of information that the new bus, some of the new buses are starting to come in next week. In terms of Member Mailman's question regarding after-school and out-of-school provision, the first thing that I think is probably important for everyone to understand is that the Worcester Public Schools don't have as a standing practice transporting students to after-school care. We simply haven't had the space or the ability to do that. The longstanding practice has been, if there is a bus that is already heading in that direction from the student's school, that has space available, then that provision can be made. So there was an initial meeting in April with providers that discussed that again, and then there will be another meeting from district, with district leadership and those representatives in late summer. We did have some questions that came in from our drivers regarding the implementation of the MyStop app. Important for really everyone involved to know that the only people who have the ability to access any child's bus route is the actual parent, the actual family of that individual child. You have to sign in with that information. The schools will be getting information in terms of a data dashboard, and the Transportation Department, of course, can actually track the routes. And those were really the main notes that came in there on a voice vote. Those items were held for further updates, of course, in August. We also did take GB 2-194, which is the policy review that we had discussed briefly at our previous meeting. And this was simply to align the transportation policies with the fact that we were taking transportation back in-house. We went through and did some cleanup as well, I will say. We didn't have a couple of policies that we needed. Part of that had to do with us kind of jamming a number of things together. So what you'll see is that we've added a new EEA, we've added a new EEAA. We did an edit to EEAE, and then there were edits to just about everything else with the exception of a new EEAEC. The one exception to all of these changes that is a little bit different is that we don't have the policy EAG, which is one regarding transportation of students in private vehicles. Now, let me say to my colleagues that not having a policy doesn't protect us legally. We still are in the same boat. So we actually should have a legal policy. However, given the sort of importance of the policy, it's my recommendation that we take the language, which, by the way, is the fairly standard language from MASC, and we actually send it to the city solicitor for his review. Because I do, I will say that it is important for us to have some sort of a policy, but I want to make sure that we're covered by municipal legal in doing that. So those are the, the items that are coming out of subcommittee. It was voice-voted, just close that, it was voice-voted to adjourn the meeting at 5:57 on that day. I do, though, want to note that I know that Dr. Manarez herself may have something to say, and I know that both Mr. Hennessy and Mr. Freeman are here as well with further updates, and I believe partly to address the items that are coming in from my colleague. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate the update from the Standing Committee. So I, I'm, I'm just not, so can we have the team come in?
Sure.
Okay, perfect. So you'll see, I just wanted the, the team to share very much what we just heard, but also what's our Plan B as we work diligently to, to have bus drivers at all, for all of the routes? And then how are we communicating this? So the team will just give a, a quick update to both the committee and our community on where we are, and, and in response to Member Johnson, Vice Member, Vice Chair Member Johnson's request. So thank you, John, and Mike.
Mr. Hennessy?
Thank you, Dr. Manarez. Through the chair, we have a, a little bit more update since the Standing Committee, just a little bit condensed version of that. We are in an ongoing, literally daily recruiting and training of drivers. As of today, we have 156 school bus drivers available to us. We are planning 196 school bus routes, which is the number of routes combined between full-sized buses and curb-to-curb special needs buses that we ran at the end of last year, which means there is a current gap of 40 drivers. That's, that's as of today. We do have a number of drivers who are about to be tested. We have a number of other drivers in training, in various stages of training. A brand-new driver takes 60 hours of training after they have their permits, and it takes some study prior to getting their learner's permit to get a CDL. We have other candidates who have come in with a Class A or a Class B CDL who are interested in driving a school bus, and they need the passenger and student endorsements. For that, they need 40 hours of training prior to a road test. And it is a little less comprehensive road test because they already hold a CDL license at that point. So again, that, that gap between 40 routes should be reduced almost on a daily basis as we go forward. We have a team of folks training on a daily basis for what, what we anticipate to go. For any shortfall that we may yet experience, we did develop a Plan B. We have that in place. What we expect to do is something similar to what we did, unfortunately, for all of last year. And it got a little worse as the year went on. The good news is, it will get better as this year goes on. We will take several routes. We will deliver schools to schools earlier, early drop-off, and then we'll do a short, quick route that might only have one or two stops to do, to accomplish and get those students back to school, so that everybody should arrive to school on time. As we hire new drivers and go through the full process that is required for onboarding, we will, one by one, eliminate those. We won't wait until we have everybody onboard. We will do that incrementally as we have folks available to do that. We, and another technique that we will be looking at is, we'll look at, is it possible to combine, to integrate some of the curb-to-curb special needs students with some of the big buses, or some of the big bus students with some of the curb-to-curb students? Just for the interest of efficiency, there are certain situations that we need to keep in mind as we do that. Most often for the children in special education with IEPs, but we will very, very much keep very, very close eye on that. It may or may not work out. We have several weeks that we're working right now on that to, to see, is that going to work or not? As we go forward, we will be communicating everything with families. The student and parent portals will be the method, the most direct way that we can get to parents and to students. All of that information regarding the buses will be in there. Their bus numbers, their stop location, their pickup bus number, drop-off bus number, and targeted pickup times and targeted drop-off times. That, anytime a route is updated, we will update that in, in, in the student and parent portals. We've worked with the IT department, and they've been extremely helpful to us in that, to communicate with the transition to a new student information system. It worked very nicely in Sage. They're now transitioning that to the new student information system, and it will communicate with our student routing program. So we'll be able to do, to do that. We will be implementing the MyStop bus tracking application. As, as Member Novick had discussed, that will be started from the beginning, and the only access to each individual child will be by that child's parent or guardian. There is a login unique to each child that protects everybody from that. In, in the interest of letting people know, we've already sent out at the end of last school year a notification that we will be implementing that. We will, we will be mailing postcards to families prior to the beginning of school with information of how to access this bus information and the MyStop. For anybody who has questions about that, who has issues with that, we have some extremely qualified transportation liaisons in our operations office, and that number at 508-799-3241 is, is going to be the one go-to place for, for all information. Those liaisons will have access to the MyStop, to, to routes, to see where people are going. They'll have access to the radio. They'll have access to the telephones. The advantage that we're going to have is everything will be coming through our operations office. We won't have to worry about making communication with somebody else elsewhere and depending on them for some, some information on that. And finally, notification of the schools. As we get close to the beginning of the school year, we will keep the schools involved in what is going to happen at that schools for buses, for numbers of buses, how many children, where the stops are, and things of that nature. And they will have access to MyStop also for the buses serving their students.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
We may want to make sure that Mr.?
No, I see, I get the meaning. Okay, so we are going to first pass the Finance. So, roll call. Oh, you have a question?
Sorry, thank you. So through the chair, I just have a quick question, and I, just, when should parents start expecting the bus routes to be public? I'm already getting, starting to get some questions on it, so just so we can let them know.
Through the chair, as, as are we. Some folks are looking to get on top of things for both their routing information and MyStop on the access of that. That will actually be shortly before school opens, probably a week or 10 days or something like that beforehand.
Okay.
We're right, currently doing the routing on both curb-to-curb and corner-to-corner. There, there is a little bit extra challenge this year with the migration of the student databases from one to the other. So there, there's a little bit of a, an extra glitch, but we're moving ahead on the parts that we can. We will have everything set. And to be perfectly honest, we want to wait as long as we can to, to get the most drivers available, so that we can have to combine the fewest number of routes possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, take a roll call on the finance items?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Member Mailman? Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Car, O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, so we have two items from Member Johnson, and I think that's number... What'd you say, 204 or 5?
Yep.
He also had a.
So we have requests that the Superintendent provide an update in the plans to address the shortage of bus drivers that have a minimal impact on students arriving late to school, and also request that the Superintendent update the school committee on the MOU. Request that the administration develop a district-wide process to ensure that students are not mock-tidy in the event that buses are late. Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. The first one, 204, thank you Superintendent Manarez for that update. And also, Mr. Hennessy, in regards to that, that was actually a good update. That was good to see. I really actually don't have any other questions regarding that. I do have one question, though, in regards to transportation for students who, at some point during the school year, get placed out of district due to family situations or placement or whatever. I, I know there was a huge impact on that, and when best-interest meetings are held, and it's held that, you know, it's in the kid's best interest to continue to, to attend school in Worcester. How, this year, how do you feel that impact would be in regards to transportation for those kids to get back and forth to school? I mean, last year, it wasn't very good. I mean, there was no transportation to help out with that. I'm just wondering, where do you think we will be at this year?
Mr. Hennessy?
Through the chair, that unfortunately will remain one of our greatest challenges going forward. The number of outside vendors who, who operate 7D vehicles has been consolidated significantly over the last few years. There's been some internal buying out of one company to another in consolidations and, and things of that nature. And then when COVID hit, each of those companies lost a significant amount of drivers that worked for them. Many of those folks were retired from other jobs, were a little bit older and more vulnerable to some of the COVID situations in a closed vehicle. So they lost a lot of those drivers and have not yet been able to replace them. We're essentially, we work very closely with two 7D companies on a regular basis, and they have both been absolute tremendous, and they turn themselves inside out to do everything they can for us. However, they're only limited to the amount of people that they can recruit and have available to them. So that's the long answer, for it's going to remain a challenge for us, and we're hoping to, to be able to, to continue to partner with those companies and others that, that might be. There's, there's several others that, incidentally, we work with, but those are more often set up by other districts sending somebody back from, from a distance to us.
Thank you. I have no other questions in regards to that, that, that item.
Okay, so do you want to?
And, so just in regards to 205, to the administration, to Superintendent Manarez, I, I just want to, you know, I have gotten some phone calls throughout the summer at the end of the school year, and I just want to make sure that we, we develop some type of district-wide process to ensure that students that are late due to bus issues are not mock-tidy. And I, and the reason why I say that is, I don't think it was happening because it, it wasn't happening consistently throughout the district. I believe there were certain schools that still mocked tits-tidy, and some schools that didn't. So just want to make sure that it's, you know, district-wide and it's consistent across the board, and I, just ensure that students are not being mock-tidy due to a bus issue or buses being late moving forward.
Mr. Chair, can I make a suggestion that we send it to FNO and actually take that in the August update?
Okay, we can do that.
That'd be perfect for everyone.
Is that where that would go? Let's see. Send FNO, I guess, in most favor. Okay, so we will send, we can file, I guess, 204, send 205 to Finance. Is that okay with everybody? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, we're gonna go to item 206. They consider to approve a proposed reorganization of central administration positions and include the establishment of the positions of Deputy Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer, and Chief Financial Officer, and Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning, and to approve the proposed job description for those positions. Oh, that is, then we also, yeah, I might just reel them off. No, I'm just gonna go out of order here. So to, because I think some members have a time commitment tonight. So then we're gonna go to consider appointing Brian Allen to the position of Deputy Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer, and Chief Financial Officer subject to contract negotiations, and also consider appointing Marie Morse to the position of Assistant Superintendent Teaching and Learning and Subject to Contract Negotiations, and also to improve the, and establish a position of a Chief Community Relations Officer and to approve the proposed job description for this position. So we have these four items, and Madam Superintendent, do you want to discuss those or just an update?
I would. So I, I want to first talk, just speak to the overall organizational structure. It's not typically the way that I will work in terms of coming in so quickly and making a change so quickly. But with the opportunity, or with the, the retirement of our previous Deputy Superintendent, it created a void, obviously, in the district very quickly. And so it's really important to fill these key leadership positions. When I took it. When I took a look between preparing for the interview for the district, reading what the community and you as the committee are looking for in terms of where the district needs to go next, and then bringing in my own experience working in districts around this size, I saw that, um, this opportunity to divide the deputies' work from the teaching and learning so that the teaching and learning person can really focus and have a lens solely on teaching and learning and not have to try to also do, um, the coordination throughout the district was, um, was necessary. And that's very common in districts of this size. So the deputy superintendent, as the job description reads, is very much the person who will be, um, a strategic advisor for me, so someone that I can bounce ideas off with, who will look at the district in totality, not solely on the instructional side, to make sure that our resource allocation is in alignment with where we need to go instructionally. And to ensure that the different divisions of the district are not functioning as divisions, but instead are functioning as a coherent team. This position will also work on leadership development of our district as a whole and putting in, um, models and systems around continuous improvement, monitoring, and then implementation. But again, co, in the, in the broader sense around the ideas of the leadership and change leadership and improving outcomes. The assistant superintendent of teaching and learning then is freed up to keep the lens exactly on teaching and learning and outcomes for children. And so, um, looking at what's happening pedagogically in our schools and how to support our teachers and our principals in, in leading that work, ensuring that the, the, the curriculum is actually meeting the needs of what the children need and the data says. And, um, and then the principal development and the professional development of our teachers and our counselors and our support staff. So aligning all of that work, that will be the work of the assistant superintendent. The deputy superintendent will be aligning the entire district through models. So the deputy superintendent, for example, will be putting together a model of what does continuous improvement look like and sound like in our district. Then once that model's in place, trains up all of district staff around that, district leadership. And then the assistant superintendent takes that model and wraps it through the instruction, the curriculum instruction and assessment, right? So the deputy creates the models, the assistant superintendent takes it and puts it into practice for the instructional side of the house. This is a very common approach to, um, leading larger districts and especially large urban districts. Because there is so much that happens both in our schools and in our larger communities. So you want someone who can, people who can keep their eyes on what they need. The last position that I'd like to bring forward is this, uh, chief community relations officer. And I actually spoke to this during my interview, I'm, I'm broadening the position a bit more. So, um, communication is essential. And we need someone who, that is, um, the work that they do and they're trained in it. They know how to be, um, the spokesperson for the district in times of crisis. But also who will create systems internally and externally around how we communicate, um, within our district with each other and with our families. But then also how are we communicating with our media and having that conversation? And making sure that the story of the wonderful things happening in this district, because there are great things happening in this district, is being told on a regular. I'm gonna give a quick example, I was at Quinn Sig today, that our community college, touring our multilingual program that we have for our middle school and high school students. And it's a wonderful opportunity for our children. We need next year to have press releases about this. People need to know that this is happening because if we're not telling our story, someone else is telling the story for us. And, um, and so we need to be sure we're doing that, our, our educators are working really hard and, um, they're very committed. So this position will do that, but in addition, because we are a community that there's so many people, community-based organizations that want to partner with us, I want someone who, I don't want to be the only person forging those partners and that relationship. I want someone who is also out doing that, creating, creating those partners, codifying those partners, and then talking about them through the communications. So this position is going to be instrumental. One of the first things this person will do was, is to look at our website and, uh, change our website a bit and just bring it up to a, a different level of excellence. So I'm very excited about these positions and what it can do for our district. The remaining, any, any other changes will come after we do a thorough analysis of the district. I welcome any questions.
No, I think this is, uh, well needed, I'm glad you moved quickly on this and, uh, I think it's brilliant. And I support this and I support the two people, Brian Allen and Marie Morse. You couldn't pick two better people to part of your team. So I'm glad to see you putting the team together quickly. And in regards to the chief community relations officer, um, uh, this is something we've been asking for for a number of years, I know Member McCullough's been asking for that, uh, if not last month. But, uh, but I think this is a good start, so I appreciate this and we'll get the contracts negotiated. And, uh, I think this, this is gonna get you going for the school year starting this, uh, August and, uh, your team up and running, so, um, everybody knows who the leaders are and, uh, who to report to. So I'm looking forward to this and forward to working with you and your team. With that, Mr. McCullough, Member McCullough?
Thank you, Mayor Petty, and through the chair, I, I appreciate you commenting on that because that was obviously what I was excited to share is that the position of a community relations type person has been something that I have actually put on the agenda several times since I became a committee member. And I am just very excited for that type of position to be created within the district because, um, you know, we had former committee members too for years that really wanted to highlight the strengths of the Worcester Public Schools. And knowing that we now are going to have someone dedicated to working on that, I think is really exciting. And I agree with the superintendent that it's, you know, if we don't tell the story, someone's going to tell the story for us. So why shouldn't we be sharing all the wonderful things that are going on within our schools and highlighting our successful students and educators and staff members and just the great initiatives going on? So I, I'm really looking forward to that and I, um, just would agree with the mayor. I'm very much looking forward to the positions of, um, Mr. Allen and, uh, Dr. Morse. I think they'll be wonderful in those roles and I look forward to working everyone, with everyone together. So thank you so much for these positions, I think they're wonderful choices.
Uh, Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair, I just want to say thank you so much for this. Um, I want to start first with the chief community relations officer. I think this is like Molly said and the mayor said, this is a really awesome position. And, um, what a breath of fresh, fresh air it will be to see a newly modeled design website. I forget sometimes I'm tall, so I think like I'm thin, but I'm tall. Yeah, so yeah, thank you so much for this role. I do want to inquire, because I, I'm, I mean, I'm, I know that this is like a start position and perhaps that, um, with the budget, we may be fine more than one person for this position or is it just like one person for now?
Talk to the Monares?
So that's a great, great question. In, in crafting the job description, I did run it by, um, Mr. Allen because IT sits under him, right? And so there's been a lot of kind of piecemealing of, um, a, a communications team, some that comes out of our ed tech. So we have some people already in-house that would be, um, that we're going to kind of bring together. And then we'll analyze if we need more. I wouldn't want to start too fast until we put things in place and then see if there's a need. But if there is, then we will definitely be, um, coming back to the committee, working through it with the team and just making sure that the, what we're trying to accomplish is actually happening, which is to make sure people have information so that they can make really good decisions for their children and our staff as well, so this, this combination.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to also agree with, um, the other two job positions with, um, Mr. Allen and Marie Morse. Thank you.
Okay, Member Mailman?
We need to be able to lift these, I think that's the gig, it's the kneeling, it's the leaning over. Through the chair to the superintendent, um, I'm behind these positions. I think these are good things, I think, um, your choices of solid people that have been in this system for a long time that have a lot of respect is really important. So kudos on that. I just have to call this item out and it actually relates to the other position on, um, I think Marie Morse's, um, job description. Number 15 says, "Lead the design and monitoring of extended day and school year programs in collaboration with community partners." And, you know, there's an effort not only in this city but in other cities to do things like talk about community schools. And I hope things like this might be part of that kind of item, so I was excited to see that. A little bit on, uh, we have had communication directors before in this district. And I only would caution, even based on some articles that were in the paper this week, that, you know, I want to make sure that this district doesn't put someone up front on, on communication roles. So the, the job description says, what are you calling it, community resource person?
Community relations officer.
Community relations officer. So when I first read that title, my thoughts were, oh, this is what I just talked about, about community relations. I think you're, I feel like you're combining community relations and communications together. And I just want to make sure that that position is never used as a shield to, um, to stop the forward, it's not just about telling the good stories, it's about telling the things that we're concerned about too. And I guess I look to you always to be that person, but to make sure that this position doesn't become that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Member Novick?
Mayor Petty, if I could respond, not that, not that Member Mailman asked a question, but I would like to respond before, okay. So, um, absolutely, that, what's extremely important is, um, that we are honest with, with our community, right? So yes, we want to tell the positive story because that's what the community deserves to hear. And the community deserves to hear, when something's not going well, I will be the one up front. This person would be my, um, would help me with crafting messaging, right? This person will help with branding, this person will help with marketing of the district. But I am the one who takes the hits, that's what I was hired to do, right? So I get to tell the good things and I get to tell when something doesn't go well. And, and I will do both. That is, I, that is my commitment, that's what you hired me to do. This individual will help make sure that I don't, uh, get myself in trouble, right? That I, I, that I tell the truth and I do it in a way where people feel like they are heard, right? And so language choice is really important and I need, and it'll be important that someone helps with that. Absolutely.
Okay, Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, to go backwards, uh, Member Mailman anticipated what I was gonna say, which is that I, I echo all of that. In particular, Member McCullough has said about, um, communication. Social media, of course, is part of my job and has sort of been an ongoing frustration for me. My gosh, we finally have a superintendent who tweets. But, uh, the notion that that position can easily instead become, uh, someone who is blocking the flow of information rather than facilitating it is, I think, something I just want to echo as a concern. I will say, uh, if it would be possible, and I absolutely do not need this this evening, at some point, if we could just get who the cabinet is, because I don't actually think that I know. And at some point, and this may be something that we're not getting like this week because it's still changing, I'd love to get an updated org chart too, in terms of who reports to whom. I use that piece in my budget frequently. Can you talk a bit, please, through the chair to the superintendent, about the division of labor between, um, on sort of a daily or weekly basis, between your position and the deputy superintendent position, please?
Dr. Monares?
Yes, through the chair. So the, so how do I describe this? So the deputy superintendent will always confer with me on high-level emergency type of things, right? So I may be out in the community, um, at representing the district in some kind of meeting of some sort, the deputy would be back in the office. Something comes up, the deputy is the one that the office staff knows who to go to. So that's really important that they know who to go to and that they don't feel like I have to contact Rachel. And Rachel's not available because Rachel's not responding to her phone. That's in, that's in crisis mode kind of thing, right? When something has happened, it would go directly to that person. When we're working in the cabinet, um, it will be my responsibility to build up the cabinet as a whole. The, I've already asked, the, the deputies will then, responsibility will then be to build up the district team based off of what we do in the cabinet. And then the deputy will be responsible, once we get the strategic plan in place, to create a monitoring system to look at that. On a day-to-day basis, um, he, this, this individual will be the, kind of the crisis manager, if you will, if crises come up on a daily basis. In my previous district, they kind of did, and so that was me. I don't, I, I will see what it looks like here in, in Worcester. So this individual serves as, um, making sure that work is moving forward, the more technical work, as well as staying in the strategic space, where Ike will stay in the strategic space and be visionary in the work and then bring it back to him to then do the implementation. Does that?
It does, yes.
And it is, there's, there's, I, it's, it will not, it, there'll be many gray areas where it overlaps. But very much like the communications, at the end of the day, I'm the superintendent, right? So I am the one who, um, who will make the final decisions and I will be the one who, um, sets the final vision with a lot of feedback and input from others.
Thank you, that, that does help. I mean, the, obviously the job descriptions are very extensive, but, um, I, I just wanted to sort of hear your reflection on that. Briefly, Mr. Chair, I, I would join with my colleagues in, um, enthusiastically, um, supporting not only the administrative changes but also the appointments. I had the opportunity of working closely with Dr. Morse when she was the turnaround principal at Union Hill, um, which, I don't know if everybody knows this, garnered us national press, by the way, got us nationally praised. And I very much remember a walkthrough that I did, actually with she and Mr. Allen and Mr. Bedard, which made it very clear to me that she has, um, she, not, it was very early on, had a very concrete sort of notion of the fact that, um, kids need to know that they're valued and also that families need to know that they're valued. And I think that starting from that place when it comes to teaching and learning and then extending that out into staff needs to know that they're valued and supported. And it is the role of administration to make sure that that happens, is something that I've always very much valued about her and I'm, I'm really appreciative of seeing her, um, assent to this leadership. And then, of course, in terms of Mr. Allen, um, I think that we have all been in this room more than once when he's been recognized by his peers both nationally and across the state in terms of the work that he's done here and elsewhere. Personally, I'm not sure we would have gotten a Student Opportunity Act if it weren't for the work that he had done. And the notion that there is always something that we can be doing better to improve the operations of the district, I think it's pretty well witnessed by the report that we just saw, but it's been true across the board in terms of everything from school nutrition to MSBA projects to the budget that we brag so much about every year. And so I very much appreciate, um, his leadership being recognized in this way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else before Ms. Novick? Okay, Member Kamara?
Thank you to the chair, I just have, like, just one understanding question. How, um, in terms of like, how does it benefit our district in, uh, with regards to, um, having like a COO and then a CFO and then a deputy superintendent all like stacked together? Just for understanding clarification.
Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, so it does look a little overwhelming, doesn't it? I, I, first I want to say that, um, I wouldn't say that this position, that those three together would necessarily be feasible for just anybody. But because Mr. Allen has done such a phenomenal job on the business side of the house, it runs like a well-oiled machine. And he is, um, very committed to keeping that machine running and is not willing at this moment to step away from any of those responsibilities. So I told him, okay, then we'll, we'll keep that there, but you have to know what I'm asking of you. And so if, if at some point we realize, okay, maybe it's too much, then we may come back and make some changes. But very early on, I'll say that I picked up on the, um, the efficiency and the, the, um, culture of the business department and that it is, um, the team is empowered. And so the directors that are there, they truly, they know their work, they know how to put systems in place, they know how to continuously improve, they know how to be, um, forward-thinking. And, um, and so I have a, I, I'm very confident that that work will continue and now we just get to spread it across the district. So it look, it may look a little overwhelming. Maybe we should have had just the title deputy superintendent and just had some of that underneath. and just had some of that underneath. But Mr. Allen is, as you said, he is known both throughout the state and nationally for being a CFO. And I want to honor that for him.
Okay, so I just have to give him a big name pocket. Okay, so we can take these items collectively on a roll call? If that's okay with everybody?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. So we'll go back to the, the schedule of the meeting here. And I believe we are on two dash one, is that two dash one nine nine on page four? So we are going to approve an increase in the IRS mileage rate from 58.5 cents to 62.5 cents per mile, effective July 1st, 2022. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Next item is to approve the prior fiscal year payments. Roll call.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Just a question. One of these is a reimbursement to one of us. And I know who, I don't know who it is, but whoever it is should recuse themselves. I know it isn't me. So one of them is a reimbursement for mileage until his first school community member as part of the superintendent search process that didn't come in until after the 1st of July.
Okay, did anybody receive a check for $63.13?
Well, they wouldn't yet because you have to vote it first.
No, no? Okay, so let's take that one first.
Okay, thanks.
So we'll take the 63.13. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara? Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes, now we have the contractual payment for an employee. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. Okay. We are on general business, response to administration, request an update in the community on Worcester regarding Worcester Public Schools and COVID. Dr. Monares?
Yes, so we have, just since from July 15th through the 21st, is that correct, Joanne? Or since the, the school, yeah, since the last report, we have six staff members that we are aware of that were tested positive for COVID. We have no students. We are not collecting the data on students that are in summer program. It's, we're not getting, we're not receiving that data. And so we'll come back in August and we'll let you know again about staff. We won't have student data until September. Do recommend that we keep tracking this data, at least through the first couple of months of school and then make, I'll make a recommendation when the committee may want to decide to stop receiving the data. But as of now, six staff members, we're not aware of any students.
Thank you for that. I just, I just in the last week, I must have ran into several people who've had COVID. I think everybody knows several people have gotten COVID in the last week. So we're not exactly where this is going. I think we just have to be well-prepared. Working with Dr. Hirsch on the city side of the public health department and our school side too, that we have, we have a plan, just in case it does skyrocket, there's an article in today's paper saying they don't see the numbers going down in the summer.
Right, yes. We will be ready.
Okay, good job. Thank you. Roll set. Okay. And?
I, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Member Johnson?
Yes. Through the chair to the superintendent. I, I think there was a follow-up from the last meeting on, an update on whether or not we were going to participate potentially in a test and stay option for the next school year.
We can get any report on that? You have an answer on that?
I do not have any information on that at this time. I will look into it though and we'll bring it back.
Okay, so we're getting off calendar maybe report? Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you. Next, we have, I think it's an update on the Municipal Broadband Committee. Member Novick?
Mr. Walton's going to start.
What's that?
He's going to introduce you.
Yeah, Mr. Walton's going to start.
So I just was asked to briefly introduce this item. The Worcester Broadband Committee consists of stakeholders from the city government, the school district policymakers, business, community organizations, and universities. This community grew out of a task force looking into solutions to close the digital divide. Committee was tasked with long-term sustainable planning and the potential for municipal broadband provided in Worcester. In prior meetings, the city has hosted Senator Markey to learn about federal funding, the city of Shrewsbury to understand a neighboring community's experience, and most notably, most recently, a solution provider for high-speed fiber. The district reports out each meeting on the progress of our continuous efforts around sustaining and improving home internet access for Worcester Public Schools families. And Member O'Connell-Novick will provide an update on the last meeting.
Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as Mr. Walton noted at the last meeting, the presentation was from Scott Bradshaw, who's from SciFi, which is a fiber network that's provided via private investment. And mostly I provide these updates to ensure that my colleagues know that, I think a lot of us wondered if that, this was a conversation that was going to go away and sort of die. And the answer is that it's not. It's very much an active conversation. They actually provide open access infrastructure through microtrendsing. They employ local people who then stay local and become part of the maintenance of the system. There was some concern expressed during the committee about the question of the level of poverty that they sort of consider the, the community to have in terms of the different levels that they provide funding for. So that there are going to be further questions from, in the next meeting. There's really been a commitment from the city that these are going to be monthly meetings. And at an upcoming meeting, there will be additional conversation with this particular provider. And we're also having, at a future meeting, Verizon come in for a similar kind of presentation. And so I will be glad to share that information with my colleagues when it happens. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So thank you for the update. Okay, our next item is to review the availability of childcare for system educators in the various positions in the various geographic parts of the city. One example, high school teachers at Burnco and lack of early childcare availability in the area in past practices. Just like to turn the meeting over to Member Johnson. I'll be back in a few minutes. Uh, Kumsa, Member Mailman?
Thank you. Through the chair to, to all of us, I guess, you know, I have great concern, not just with our teachers, but all educator groups, that we are doing everything we can to recognize the issues that are in place right now. And I had a conversation with a couple of Burnco teachers about lack of early childcare providers in the north quadrant, but no doubt this is the case in a bunch of areas. So I don't know past, and I didn't have Helen to wordsmith it for me, so I did the best I could with this item. But I think it's a broad topic and I, the motion is to send it to Teaching and Learning. But this is not just past practice in our district, but also what's going on in other districts that might be important and useful for us to think about is the item. So, thank you.
Okay. So we're sending this to Teaching and Learning? Everyone okay with that? So do we, I forget, do we do a roll call on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Okay. Next one is to facilitate with the city to remove all the city IT department from Worcester Tech to allow for expansion of Worcester Tech programming. Mailman? Member Mailman?
Thank you. Just to reiterate, this has been, we have had the IT department at Worcester Tech forever and a day. We have a long waiting list and it seems to me that this is the time to really work with the city to find a different place for their IT department so that we can utilize all the space at Worcester Tech. So this, the motion here was to go to Finance and Operations and I, I hope that we can bring some urgency to this item. Thank you.
So we're going to send this to Finance and Operations? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Okay. Next item, requests that the superintendent update the school committee on the MOU with the Worcester Public, Worcester Police Department for school liaison offices and provide updates at subsequent school committee meetings to include plans for your work in MOU. I put this item on, and Dr. Monares, you're willing to speak to this, right? Give an update?
Yes, I am. So we, we have a meeting scheduled between myself and the acting city manager, school police, and our district leadership. That's scheduled for the very beginning of August, so about two weeks from now. We already have our legal counsel drafting up some possible language for our MOU. And then we'll look at it as in that smaller group. It is our intention, we're really going to try to then take that MOU to, it's my understanding that our acting city manager had commissioned a, a task force of some sort, I think a safety task force, I think is what it's called. We want to try to get the MOU in front of them before we bring it to you in August. If for some reason we can't because of calendars, what we will still do is bring you the, the draft MOU, have it in place for the start of the school year, and then still engage with the safety committee, or that safety task force, and look and monitor to see how this MOU is working and make some recommendations for changes by that first quarter. So we for certain will have something to bring to you at the August committee meeting so that you can approve it. The goal again would be to have met with the task force prior to that. If for some reason we can't, because I thought our committee meeting was a little bit later in August, but it's actually a week earlier, we will put it into place, but consider it a draft of a final that then we'll evaluate and see how it goes, bring back information to the committee. Our goal is to make sure that our students are safe, that our, our staff needs what they need, and that our partnership with the, the city police is clear as to who does what and when, and then the frequency on that. Included in returning with the data, so that, I'm thinking, you know, first quarter ends probably around the holiday time, we'll also bring in some data, or, so bringing in the information will include data around the frequency of the liaisons, what they were called to schools for, and so that you can take a look at that too. That should give us a good idea of, is this MOU working? Do people have what they need? And is it making the impact that we need it to in a positive manner? Thank you.
And, and I just want to just make a correction and any of my colleagues could correct me if you want. But I, we, we don't, we, we can't, we don't approve the MOU. We're just asking to take a look at it, just to ensure that it aligns with our policies and that it doesn't impact any policies or anything that we need, we, we may need to put in place in Worcester Public Schools. But we also just want to see what we're working with and what, what is working with our schools and our principals and, and that. So, so we will hold that, am I right, until the next meeting? I'm sorry, that is, Member Mailman?
Thank you. Through the chair, I also want to just make sure that our policy is lining up with state policy and state guidance because that was a big, so I would like, when we do have our update, I would like to know how we're lining up with the state recommendations as well in terms of police reform and everything that's going on. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, so we'll hold that for the next meeting. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
And we are now going to go down, because we've done the other ones. We are going to skip all the way down on the bottom of page six there to, to GB two dash two one zero, to employ the administration to launch a positive campaign during the new academic year to last all through the school year. All Worcester Public School teachers and staff to take a stance on the usage of supportive words, language to boost students' self-awareness, gift, passion, sense of self-confidence in their education and more. Member Kamara?
Thank you. To the chair. I just wanted to thank you for this opportunity. So this item, as I have it, is to, to the administration, but then to ask the new superintendent to kindly lead us and support this effort. I have, so this was drafted because there were a series of stories from our young people in our public schools, as well as educators in our public schools with regards to words and treatment and language that has been used amongst children, from adult to child. And we are in a wonderful time to correct a lot of things with new leadership and just oversight of so many things. I believe firmly that every child that comes into our schools and walk into our doors deserve respect, love, and care. And I, I'm so passionate about this kind of stuff here, for children to feel that they are, no matter who they are, where they are from, what they do, that they are loved. And for that kind of language to be communicated in our district among all of our kids in the different public schools. I am aware, very aware, that a lot of teachers in certain schools already do exemplify such role and I want to applaud them for that. And yeah, so I just want for this to be something that this academic semester, when children are coming into our, our public schools for more than one educator staff to be really communicating love, you know, confidence within themselves from now until years to come. So thank you.
So you, you refer to the administration, so would you like a report back on this or answer on this?
Through the chair. So yeah, so the administration will work with, with it and, and support it in however way that it's felt.
Okay.
If I could?
Member Novick?
Please, I believe, I defer to the superintendent.
So if I could, through the chair, I completely, wholeheartedly agree. That's part of this culture of belonging that we know our children deserve, as well as our staff. And so what I would like to recommend or like to share is that, working with the team, we are going to put together a comprehensive wellness support and services plan that I would like to bring forward. And in that plan, I would like to include this element as well as many other pieces. So in listening to past committee meetings, I've heard much conversation around the use of our different staff members, the, the need for wellness supports for our students, what does our wraparound coordinator do? What does the, the SACS do? There's, right, there's a lot. So rather than have different elements, I'd like the, us to be able to take a look at our current state around wellness supports and this culture of belonging and then put, then determine what our desired state is and have a very comprehensive plan that plugs in what people do, what people say, and how we treat each other. And so I'd like to file this for now while we develop that plan because I want the plan to be developed with the people who will actually be implementing it. And that would need to include the individuals at our schools, our principals, parents, a very comprehensive, or a very inclusive group. So if the committee is okay with that, that, that would be my recommendation. So if the, um, committee is okay with that, I, that, that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion if necessary.
You'll make that motion?
Motion to file, yep.
Okay. Roll call, motion to file, uh, roll call?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Member Kamara?
Yes. Member Kamara?
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Next item, to receive timely reports on five racism, sexual harassment, and discrimination complaints from staff and educators in the district. Member Kamara? And this was, you referring this to the administration, right?
To the chair, thank you. To the administration and, um, to the chief diversity officer, if, Dean, so, um, so... And, um, I don't want to read or write anything here, but it's along the same lines as far as the plans, um, that you have, you know, talked about. So I look forward to, all of us here look forward to, um, supporting you on that plan. I would just stop right there, thank you.
Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so sympathizing entirely with my colleagues' concern about this issue. I mean, we've certainly had, um, in particular when it comes to, um, students, we've had a, a couple of rounds of this. Um, I, I think that this is well outside of our purview. Um, that this is, this is an HR, um, issue, it's internal to management. And so I'm wondering if, if there is a way to, um, and I would certainly defer to any recommendation from the superintendent on this, if there is a way for us to, um, receive, um, at least reassurance and timely information within our purview regarding any of these, um, sorts of issues without us stepping outside of, I mean frankly, we, we would, not only is it outside of our purview, it would actually be illegal in some cases for us to ask for this information. Um, so I'm wondering if it's possible, um, through the chair to ask the superintendent for a recommendation in terms of the, what level of information we can actually inquire of here.
Superintendent?
Yes, through the chair. So I was actually going to ask around clarity on, um, what this ask is. What I would like to recommend is that I work with, um, with legal to develop a, a model of what this might look like. I think I want to make sure to, um, member Novick's, um, caution that, that we're not providing something that's not allowable. I see that if we're, I, my, my, what I do believe is that we can provide numbers. Um, we of course wouldn't be, be able to provide names and we may not be able to provide, um, anything else around that. But I will work with legal and then what I would like to recommend is that I bring a model back. Like this is what the report would look like, this is the frequency of the report, and make sure that that meets the need of the committee and then we can go from there.
Thank you.
Member Novick?
Yep, that's fine, then why don't we move forward with that, understanding, thank you, vice chair.
Okay. Member Kamara?
Thank you, yes. Um, and, and also with regards to like seeking, um, advice from legal, I will also like to understand if, um, if perhaps like legal can then determine for some of the matter to be put, um, um, in exec, things that we see and view in executive session. Okay, I guess my colleague is saying no, so no, but, um, yeah.
I'll include that in, I'll, I'll find out and then we'll, we'll find out from there. What I'd also like, um, as part of this model is like definitions of what, when we talk about these different incidents, what they are, so we're all talking about the same thing. So more, we'll come back with that, thank you.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I think it's smart that, uh, Dr. Monarez, um, speak with legal, uh, in regards to what, what could be potentially given, shared, um, and I could be wrong. I, I, I think past practice is typically, we, we wouldn't have, uh, that wouldn't be within our purview to receive certain information. But she will, um, um, speak to legal, get us back some information and we will go from there. So are we looking to, um, what are we looking to do here? File this and, or, 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 um, hold it and come back with in, information?
I would recommend we hold it and I return with, um, information.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, should we clarify as to how long we're holding? If we're holding for the next meeting or?
I, let's, um, can, can, let's ask the superintendent, but I'm not sure if the next meeting, um, would be enough time for that. So.
I'd like to have until the, um, second meeting in September. We'll try to get it earlier, but that would be the latest.
Thank you. So we'll hold this to, until the second meeting in September for, um, report out information on this? So, roll call to hold this item?
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Okay, so, uh, so I get this right. So we are now going to go into executive session. So do we, uh, join this meeting and do a roll call to go into executive session or?
Um, Mr. Chair, the, um, the answer is that we would be recessing into executive session. So if you, if you read the general business items, um, out here in public session and then the clerk has asked me to make sure that, um, that you're clear and that everyone is clear that we will be, we will be coming back to public session after executive session?
Yes, I got that message, thank you. All right, so we will recess and to go into executive session. So we'd be going into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to conduct collective bargaining regarding grievance twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-eight, to just, also to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If a open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body of the chair, so if the chair so declares, I do. Successive contract negotiations, Educational Association of Worcester, units A and B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If a open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of a public body and the chair so declares, I do. Successive contract negotiations, Educational Association of Worcester, instructur, instructional assistance unit. And to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. If a open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares, I do. NHR one dash one five six, fifty-two week administrative secretaries and Worcester School Committee grievance regarding accrue of vacation benefits. Roll call.
To, member, member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Me adjourn, I will see you guys over in the executive session.
Everybody? Andrew? Okay.
Recording in progress.
Welcome everybody back to the school committee meeting. Um, so we're gonna have one item. We're gonna request that the school committee, Rafi, the agreement between the NHR one dash one fifty-six, fifty-two week administrative, uh, secretaries and Worcester School Committee regarding the accrue of vacation benefits. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
Yes.
Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes. So with that, we have a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Member Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
Member Mailman? Member McCullough? Member O'Connell-Novick?
Yes.
And Mayor Petty?
Yes.